Okay, um, we're gonna get going here. I would like to welcome you all to this work session for February 12th. We are joined at the board table by our deputy superintendent Vicki Byer, who's filling in for Dr. Tiller, who couldn't be here. And then we're also joined by, why don't you guys, our ICSC students? Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourselves, please?
Hi, I'm Viva Winkler. I'm a senior at Southwest and I'm the president of Interest City Student Council.
Hello, my name is Tamara Zavasus-Hortena and I'm a freshman at West High School.
Thank you guys for joining us tonight. Next, we'll go for a roll call. Kinsey? Becker?
Here.
McCoy, here. Layton and Warren?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Lierly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Okay, um, we have six board members present and Laura Layton and Warren is joining us remotely tonight. So, welcome, everybody. The first thing we have tonight is recognition and I hope you're all ready because this is gonna be awesome. We have, uh, the Oneida Dance Group will be performing for us. So if you all just wanna... Oh, Stephanie, please, take it away.
Hi, um, good evening. We're all really excited that you could be here and we're very honored to have this opportunity. As Indigenous students in a public school, our students walk into worlds every day. And this is a wonderful opportunity to show you part of the Indigenous world that they walk in. My name is Stephanie Stevens and I work for the Oneida Youth Enrichment Services Program. Um, I'm a youth advocate at Lombardi Middle School. We do have dancers from Lombardi and I wanted to take, take the time to thank them for dancing, to thank their parents and guardians for their support, for bringing them and to help them get ready. I'm going to introduce our emcee, Ryan Peters. Um, she's from the Menominee Nation.
Go ahead. Yep, you got it.
Also, Ryan Peters, I'd be introducing the dancers and the dancers. The first dance we have is a jingle dress dance. The jingle dance is a healing dance. The metal cones make a sound that is said to heal the body, mind, and spirit. The dances that we have are Anoa King, J.C., Retora, and Cameron Cottrell and Cole Cottrell.
Thank you, well done.
The dress dancers.
Ladies and gentlemen, follow this summer trip. Salute.
The next dance we have is the teen girls traditional. The dancers we have are Sophia Farmaker and Alyssa Perkins. Traditional is a dance that represents dignity, grace, and modesty. In this style, the feet must never completely leave the ground to symbolize the connection of woman to mother earth. The fringe on a sleeve must be kept in a constant momentum, sweeping in large arcs. Some, um, tradition, traditions say that this slow style of dancing represents the long times that the, that the women, children, and elders would have to spend waiting when the men went away to hunt or battle. Sophia's dance is a women's Whittlin' style dance, traditional to the Whittlin' tribes in Wisconsin. This style of dance is now seen everywhere. Alyssa dance is a southern traditional.
About a round of applause, thank you very much.
The last dance we have is the teen boys traditional. The dancers we have are Aurelius Canarius and Kenian Hargrove. The northern traditional dancers is a modern evolution of the, um, sorry. Tribal, tribal outfits from the tribes of the northern plains. Northern traditional dancers demonstrate a style of dance that involved from the old form of war dance. The dance depicts the telling of a war story or hunting expedition. Other dancers also imitate wildlife such as horses, birds, or buffaloes while performing. Even though this dance style originated where northern plains other tribes dances style and may have elements and symbolize of their tribe's nation depict, depict, depicted in their regalia. Is that off?
Definitely.
All the parents too.
And all the parents can tell it as well. When all the dancers and all the parents can tell it.
The parents are like, I don't wanna go on.
Yeah.
You don't say anything or should I? Okay. Okay.
Yeah. You can face this way.
Yeah, could you face this way? There you go. Okay. Um, first of all, thank you so much for coming. Um, it was just wonderful to, and, um, who, can you raise your hand if you're a parent of one of these great students?
Hey.
Thank you. Um, I, I just really appreciate you joining us tonight. Um, I enjoyed every second of that. And, um, your costumes are beautiful and your dancing is beautiful as well. And I, um, I just can't thank you enough. Is there anything else that you'd like to share or any, while you have a chance, anything you'd like to say? Does our board have any questions? Laura, Laura Layton and Warren?
Hi, guys, I have been trying to listen on my phone, but I'm having some audio issues. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Um, wonderful, and I think it's important to note that, um, what the dancers are wearing is considered regalia. And that would be the proper term moving forward. And thank you all so much, Yonko. I really wish I could have been there and selfishly I wanted to come there, but I thought I'd keep my germs to myself. So, thank you so much.
I apologize for that and I, I, thanks for the reminder, Laura. I understand that it is your, the regalia. And, um, again, thank you very much. Uh, any, go ahead, Brian.
Stevens, I'm familiar with the YES program, but would you mind sharing with our audience, what exactly are YES advocates do, just briefly, for people that aren't familiar?
At Lombardi Middle School and at, um, different, uh, schools in the district, uh, we do have YES advocates, specialists, the YES specialists are licensed teachers. They help with homework help, um, for the students. Um, and then I myself as an advocate, I run a lot of groups. I have girls groups, boys groups, um, I do lunch groups, um, and I work with, um, I partner with different tribal, um, programs. So we have like Oneida experiential adventure come in and we have, um, groups from Oneida Social Services coming in to work with the students, um, while they're at school.
Very good, thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
Just wanted to share, that's another great resource that we have and another partnership that we have in our community with making sure that our students have connections with our community and within the school. So, um, you do great work. I'm very familiar with the program and thank you very much, everyone, for coming out.
Yep. Were there any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much, guys. We're just gonna give them a moment, um. Hey, I'm tempted to call this meeting adjourned, but we have a whole full agenda, so we're gonna carry on. Because that's a hard act to follow. Okay, so we're gonna continue on with our public forum. Are there, uh, we do have one person who wants to speak, but if there are other people in the audience who want to speak, you have to fill out one of these papers and hand it to Kinsey. So, um, uh, so that the person that we have who'd like to speak is Ed Dorf.
And you're right, that's an extremely hard act to follow. It was really wonderful to watch that. Last Friday, I was asked to come to the district office to meet with the superintendent to discuss potential boundary changes. It was a, it was a great meeting. I left after making another appointment to meet with him next week. I won't be keeping that appointment. On Saturday, I was made aware of and then watched a video of a live, live streamed interview that our superintendent did on a radio show in Atlanta earlier in the week. While, as I understand, it isn't a video of our district's origin, I understand that the district does have a copy, uh, which is, as I understand as well, subject to open records requests. I strongly encourage the district to make this video publicly available so that people can view the entire piece before drawing any conclusions, one way or another. In that interview, Dr. Tiller spoke of being called to go to Green Bay. He said he is a man of faith and that he leads by example. There were station or commercial breaks during the interview and the microphones in the studio stayed on. They stayed live. During the course of the interview between the actual questions and answers and the breaks, the superintendent spoke of Green Bay and of specific individuals and the community as a whole. He referred to a subordinate as a wicked witch and a [BLEEP] spelled out. He spelled that out. I've known and worked with that individual for eighteen years and they have bent over backwards to serve the best interests of all kids and our most ethnically and economically diverse schools. He used the term Lily, Lily White to describe Green Bay. He suggested that a major employer wanted to keep people down and that they gave parties for kids as a substitute for doing right by their workers. He called into question the ability of ninety-two percent of the teaching staff to really do their jobs effectively. These are things I all saw and heard. I understood that the district had, uh, that, I'm sorry. I understood that several district staff members have viewed this video. They viewed it on Thursday. And by, uh, Saturday afternoon, the video was taken down by whoever posted it. This unfortunate event on the heels of the Burns Van Fleet report and on the cusp of boundary changes and certain calls for a referendum will require the community to come together under strong leadership. Our students, staff, and community deserve to be respected, trusted, and treated with positive regard by district leadership. How you, the board, ultimately handle this matter will be a test of your character and your moral courage. That's all I have to say on the matter and I won't be speaking of it again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else? Okay. Um, okay, we're gonna move on with our agenda. Next, under operations, we have a presentation regarding the 2022-23 financial audit and that's gonna be facilitated by Sarah Angie.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce John Troutman from CLA, our audit firm, who is here tonight to present our 2223 audit results.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon and again, uh, hard act to follow, but, uh, we're gonna talk about the financial statements and the audit, looking back to June 30th, 2023, the most recent audit, audited financial statements. Um, if you do have them in front of you, um, I will be calling out page numbers. It's certainly not necessary. Um, but if you do, would like to follow along, I will reference the page numbers. Um, with that, I will start with the opinion, the auditor's report itself.
I just wanted to make sure I know which document to follow you in.
Yeah. There's really three documents. Two of them are... Sorry about that. Um, there's really three documents. Uh, two of them are letters, they're shorter letters. One is the management letter, one is the governance communication letter. Um, I will be speaking from the actual annual financial report, which is the hundred plus page document. So, thank you for that. There. Um, that is the, uh, page one is the independent auditor's report. So that's really the result of the audit itself.
It's called signed final, yes.
Um, and, and that is really what, uh, the audit is all about. The independent auditor's report is the opinion letter that we issue on your financial statements. The whole rest of the document is those financial statements and those footnotes that attach to those financial statements. At the very end is the single audit, which considers the federal and state grants you got. So that's kind of the sections of that on audit report and financial statements. Um, the first page is really the independent audit report, which is the opinion. So the first paragraph there is opinion. So, uh, that was changed a couple of years ago where they put the opinion front and center. Um, we did issue an unmodified opinion for the district. Uh, that is otherwise known as a clean opinion. Um, that is what your internal controls, which again, operate three hundred and sixty-five days a year to generate, uh, reporting and data out of your financial system, sets out to achieve, again, any external audit, you do not want any modifications to those, um, if possible. So, great job there. Uh, the rest of that independent auditor's report just goes through some basis for those opinions and it talks about what we're issuing opinion on. It talks about our responsibility as your auditor, as a district's auditor. It talks about your responsibilities as a district itself. Um, with that, um, I will switch over to the next section and just kind of describe this section. Again, the management discussion and analysis section is really a, a section that is contained in this report, but it is really a hundred percent the district's. Um, the district writes, writes this, the design and the intent of this section is really to take all of the financial data, which is a lot. I mean, there's a lot of financial data contained in your annual financial report and put it into a fairly short section that really puts it into plain English. Goes through the highlights, what changed, you know, things you need to know as a reader of this financial statement. So again, I highly encourage you to read through that. Um, again, that's not part of our opinion, so I won't cover it in detail, but it is a very good read, especially for any constituents that, that wanna a fairly short summary of the financial statements. Next section, page fifteen, starts the basic financial statements. That's essentially your financial statements that we opine, that we issue an opinion on. And I will skip the first few pages, which is the district-wide, um, statements. And I just skip that just simply for presentation purposes. If there's any questions on that, I can certainly go back to that. But I really wanna spend a little bit of time on page eighteen. And page eighteen is a balance sheet. It's a very similar, uh, customary balance sheet of any entity. Um, list your assets, uh, in, in order of liquidity. So cash and investment would be the, the top asset, all the way down to, uh, the, the most restrictive asset, which is the inventory. Total assets for the general fund for the district, ninety-seven million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Conversely, comparing that down, the balance sheet is your liabilities. So these are all of, of liabilities that are recorded, twenty-eight million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand. Um, again, current liabilities on the top, um, less current on the bottom. Deferred inflows of resources related to leases. Again, this, this particular financial statement is the second year of the lease implementation. We talked a little bit about that last year, if you were here during the presentation. Um, that's one of the numbers that's component of that. But I really wanna focus in on the fund balance. And again, fund balance is where you left off in this fiscal year, June 30th, 2023. And it's also what you carried over into the current fiscal year you're in right now. There are four components of that. Much like we just talked about, there is a hierarchy, most restrictive on the top. So non-spendable, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. If you notice that, that, that equals your number of inventories and prepaid items on the top for an asset. So every dollar... So every dollar of that asset is restricted, is, is non-spendable. You don't have that to spend. So that's another way of looking at the hierarchy here is you have some that you don't have, some that you have. Below that line, you have, so restricted fund balance, four hundred and forty-one thousand of that sixty-eight million total fund balance, you do have, but it is restricted. It's restricted outside of the district's control. So you do not have control of that money, even though you do have that. These are things like grants and things like that, that you must spend on a certain and particular area. You draw an imaginary line under that number, and everything below that is at the district's disposal, at the district's use. You do have that available, and it is for your use. Now, assigned thirteen million is earmarked. It's taken out of the total fund balance and said, we are taking this for particular reasons and putting it aside. So that's, again, a district action to do that. To unassign would take additional action and additional activity. Below that is your reserve. That's your reserve that you carry over into the next year. So fifty-four million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand of the sixty-eight million, four hundred and forty-seven, four forty-seven is really that unreserved, unassigned fund balance. So that's a number that a lot of times we focus in on, right? Because that is not earmarked. It's not restricted. It's and a lot of times that, that number is compared or assessed whether that's enough fund balance. And really, the, the school districts in Wisconsin have a really a range, fifteen to twenty percent is really considered a minimum. The reason for that is cash flow, various grants and property taxes and things like that don't come in for very, for, for quite a few months into your, your district's school year. So you're already, you know, using resources month, months in advance of getting some of this money. So all districts in Wisconsin are really faced with that cash flow challenge, which is why that fifteen percent reserve comes into play, especially in the early part of the year, the first half of the year. Your fund balance is about seventeen percent of your expenditures. So a lot of times what we do is we compare that into your expenditures. So that not only meets your fund balance policy, but it's also within that range. So that's excellent. That's good. Districts that do not have that have to rely on short-term borrowing and things to get through that cash flow gap. So, right there. Any questions on that so far? If there is, just please interrupt me, otherwise I will just keep running on going. Page twenty, I won't spend a great deal of time on page twenty. This is really the income statement. This is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This just simply shows where you got to that level of fund balance. So the fund balance and the balance sheet is really a specific point in time as of June thirtieth, two thousand three. This is the entire year. This is all the revenues coming in, all the expenditures going out, both on page twenty and twenty-one. So you can see three hundred and twenty-two million in revenues. The various functions there are listed. And then if you turn the page, the top of page twenty-one, you see three hundred and eighteen million in total expenditures and the various functions there of your district. So you have revenues over expenditures of three million and seven thirty-two. You have some other financing sources and uses, including transfers in, transfers out, and then some proceeds and lease proceeds as well. So all said and done, you had an additional use of three million, five fifty-four. So at the end, comparing the beginning of the year to the end of the year fund balance, it went up one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So from sixty-eight million to sixty-nine to sixty-eight million, four hundred and forty-seven that we just talked about. The rest of the funds there, I just kind of conclude on the basic financial statements here. The other three columns there, you see, there, there's two other major funds, the Capital Project Fund and the Referendum Debt Service Fund. You have an additional ninety-eight million in the Capital Project Fund that, of course, has to be used for capital projects. And then Referendum Debt Service, five million, five hundred and seven additional, that has to be used for debt service. The other governmental funds is a subtotal. That's an aggregate total coming from all of your non-major funds within the district. And there you have an additional thirteen million, seven hundred and sixty. So you have fund balances of one hundred and eighty-six million, twenty-eight thousand. Again, that's your kind of a snapshot, very high level, very quick, but kind of where the year ended that we audited. The rest of the, the, the area I really want to talk about is on page eighty-seven, and that's your federal and state single audit. So again, I kind of spoke, this was one document, but it's really a couple of different sections. Larger districts in, in Wisconsin and larger entities in Wisconsin that receive a lot of federal funding have to go through what's known as a single audit. That's a little bit different. It's more of a compliance audit. And again, this is our opinion letter and our report, independent hours report on that. So you can see that there is, goes through each opinion and also the basis for our opinions and responsibilities, much like the financial statements. But then it lists and, and, and we have to test your major federal, federal programs. That financial statement, or otherwise known as a schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and then also the state awards, is on page ninety-one through ninety-three for the federal, and then ninety-four starts the state. In that process, we are required to show and report any findings that we do see. Again, in page ninety-nine, I believe it is, yes, ninety-nine. We did have some financial statement finding, one financial statement finding, one compliance finding. These are pretty specific in nature. Preparation of financial statements is really related to the financial close and the preparation of these statements. Once in a while, there is material entries that take place that, that we have to make as the audit, and then we have to show a preparation of financial statement finding. That's what two thousand twenty-three zero zero one is. Really, the takeaways there and the mitigating controls there is, you know, it's the district's financial statements. The district is involved heavily in the process of the financial statements. So once in a while, that does happen where we do make some, some material entries. But the process of approval of that really rests on the district. So there's a very robust review process that your management goes through, works with us at the very end of the process, to really make sure that, that, you know, the, the district is, is fully understanding of all the entries that were made in the audit process itself. So again, that's, that's really wrapped up in the conclusion part of the audit. And then there's a very specific finding on page one hundred. Probably one of the more common findings we've had this year, which, which is related to procurement, suspension, and debarment. And this is just an internal control finding where you, you didn't do anything wrong, per se. You did it right. The documentation needs to be increased as far as the, the documentation and the records that are kept to prove that you did that. So federal audit guidelines, this is the single audit now, are very specific on what you need to do. Again, I mentioned it's a very common finding. For whatever reason, just with all the different federal grants that districts are getting this year and the last two years, really, there's just a, a, a lot of workload in this area. And some of the, the more lower-level things like keeping some of the suspension and debarment were missed in, in parts of the year. So again, it's a finding situation. So once you miss it, it, it becomes an issue. But again, we've worked with the district's management really to, to get through that and, and, and correct that. You have a corrective action plan. I probably already corrected at this point, most likely. Any questions on that? I just have one more thing beyond that, which is kind of a look forward into what's coming up as far as gasbies and things like that. We just went through the lease gasby, and this particular financial statement is the subscription-based IT, which is closely related to the lease. Those are all liability standards that are putting more liabilities on your books. I just have a few comments of what's coming next, but if I want to pause there for any questions or anything that either of you would like to, to me to talk about before I get into that.
Go ahead.
So I'm trying to understand the initial finding that you described, and you're a party to it. Is that correct? And that engaging you as an external party for end-of-year reconciliation was part of the finding? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, proceed.
Sorry about that. In conclusion, we kind of look, take a thirty seconds or so just to look forward. So we just went through some pretty significant standards in the last two years. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, the fiscal year you're in right now, at this point, looks to be fairly quiet, which is good news. It's been about five years since we've had a year with no new rules, significant rules. However, looking beyond that, there is some activity coming out, and we'll see again how this relates to how it affects the district. But the, the standard setters are really focused on liabilities. We talked about lease liabilities. We talked about subscription-based liabilities, potential liabilities. Now they're looking at compensated absences. So that's the next gasby that's gonna be effective for school districts, and they're looking through all of the potential compensated absences that are out there. So right now, there are rules that apply to those. And for example, sick leave, when you have sick leave and it's time off only, that is not a liability currently because getting sick and having time off is not necessarily a measurable event. I don't know when I'm gonna get sick. You don't know when you're gonna get sick. Neither do any, any of your employees. Well, they're changing that. They're looking at that and saying, if there's any kind of benefits at all, this could be a potential liability, and they're gonna have some criteria, but there's gonna be potentially an increased liability on your books for this. I don't know exactly what that looks like. They're still in the, the phase where they're going back and forth, trying to iron out the details. But you can see the consistent nature of the rules coming through. They're trying to get, make these financial statements as transparent as possible. And again, these are federal rules. These are all entities in the, in the country. And they're also trying to make sure all the liabilities are recorded. So again, the, we'll work through, we will help the district through any kind of change that needs to be made. We'll see what DPI also responds to this as well from your regulation sides. Any questions, anything else you want me to go through? Otherwise, that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Troutman? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, then, we're going to move on to be other post-employment benefits report, and that's going to be, I believe, you, Sarah.
That is me.
Okay.
So this is our fund seventy-three that was opened several years ago by the district for contributions toward our meritist program. The report was in the agenda. Our balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three was two point nine million dollars. After the end of the fiscal year, and we determined how the financials came out, we transferred an additional five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that fund. So the current balance is eight point two million dollars. You can see that the change in net position was only about fifty-three thousand dollars. There wasn't much in the trust in two thousand twenty-two, so the interest there was only five hundred and fifty-one dollars. You can see we earned about seventy, seventy-four thousand in two thousand twenty-three. That's really the gist of it, unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody? I think we're good then. Okay, let's move on to, um. Thank you, guys. That's my hyper-converged infrastructure, and that'll be handled by Josh Pacheco. Hey, Josh.
Hi there. This is a proposed procurement from technology out of their operational budget. This is the, this is a planned expense. However, excitingly, this expense used to be a hundred percent out of the district's pocket. This is now E-rate eligible, so portions of this, we get an eighty percent reimbursement back. Our hyper-converged infrastructure basically allows us to run hundreds of servers on just a few pieces of equipment and, and other pieces of, of technology are run on those nodes as well. So this is routine, but non-routine in that it's newly eligible for reimbursement, which we'll be applying for. You can see the recommendation there that we're, we're taking the low bid.
Hey. Does anyone have questions for Josh? Go ahead, James.
What's the depreciation schedule for something like this?
I, I don't know.
Five? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
So five years? Is that what? Okay, just, very good. Okay, anybody else? Andrew.
I was Nutanix relatively new, or have we been on it for a while?
It is not new. We put in a hyper-converged infrastructure originally in two thousand eighteen, which was a Simplicity platform that was then bought out by HP. So this is a change in platform for the district from HP Simplicity to Nutanix, but Nutanix has been around quite a while, just not here.
Yeah, I'm familiar with both. Why, why did you change? What, what's the advantages to the district of the, the change to Nutanix?
I can get that information for you. I, I wasn't a party to, to that decision.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the recommendation for Southwest Ticket Booth contract, and that's Josh as well.
Yes, and actually, that attachment is the wrong attachment, so don't bother bringing that up there. There's a, there's a memo that you'll see that has a recommendation. So this is, um, this is a project, again, coming out of the operational budget. This is not, this is a planned expense, but it is not a referendum project. This, this is going to be kind of a, a refresh of the, the plaza area there by the football field at Southwest, adding handicap parking spots, some other additional parking spots. Getting a nice concrete plaza there, doing some landscaping. So we had to wait for the other work at Southwest to be done before we could do this. So this is another situation where we'll be taking the low bidder. We had two bidders. Murphy Concrete and Construction, Northeast Asphalt. Northeast Asphalt is the recommendation at four hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents.
All right. That's it for, for Josh for the moment. I think you're coming back maybe later?
We'll see.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is school security drill review, and Ms. Byer is going to take care of that.
Yeah, this is just the regular drill evaluation that the board takes a look at. It's kept confidential for safety reasons, and you will vote to accept them at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions about that? Go ahead, Lynn.
Can I ask you, I read this, and who, who looks at the findings and follows up on them, and, and what is the process, and also, how often does this happen?
You review them twice a year. Chris Coller is in charge of our safety protocols, so he reviews regularly with the principals to make sure that we're following what's expected.
So, you know, I, I mean, I saw some concerning things in specific schools, like specific rooms and that sort of thing. So each one of those gets fixed before the next one, right? Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then we're going to move on to job description updates, and I think we're going to be hearing from Yep, Mike Freeze. Mike, are you there? There you are.
Yes, I am. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Happy New Year. Good to see all of you. As, as you may all be aware, the Human Resources Department that I work in on a regular basis works with our hiring supervisors and departments when they are seeking to update job descriptions in anticipation of openings that need to be posted or recruited for, or when positions are newly created or need to be brought forward to the board as part of reorganizations. And so depending on the volume and the number that we have, sometimes you might get one at a time. Sometimes there might be a few. Tonight, we actually have three different areas that, that we wanted to bring forward for your consideration. The largest bulk of them comes from our facilities department. They've been undergoing a year-long review of their positions in terms of ensuring that the job descriptions are accurate, up-to-date, reflect safety and lifting requirements, and you know, clarify the, the essential functions. One of the things, for example, that, and Josh can speak to this, if, if there are questions on this, more of Luann is there, can also speak to it. But for example, when our schools updated air conditioning a number of years ago, that required that individuals working in schools that um that required that uh individuals working in schools that previously maybe had not had air conditioning, some of the essential functions um need to be updated, and so this is an example of how we're doing some some updating uh for the Facilities Department. But we also are heading into our administrator hiring season, so when we have principal uh openings, we want to make sure that our principal job description is updated. Uh I can tell you that the school leadership team has worked on this job description to ensure that it is uh modernized according to current principal administrative uh standards, as well as the the functions of the job focusing on instructional leadership, as well as uh being highly competent as managers um and administrators of our schools. And so we're asking for your consideration update of that. And then finally, um as part of our educator um pipeline of project in conjunction with our Teaching and Learning Department and our leadership at Head Start, uh we've been looking at how we could um latch on to something that I was working with the Department of Workforce Development um on last year, which is a youth apprenticeship pathway for future educators, so there is both an early childhood and a school-age classroom youth apprenticeship opportunity that has been approved by the state, and we are asking the board consider approving a job description affiliated with both of those youth apprenticeship opportunities, and then we're seeking to uh pilot that in our Head Start programs next year, um as we kind of work on our, you know, the grow our, grow our own pathway internally, um as our students are taking dual credit courses, preparing for college, and then the opportunity for to serve any apprenticeship, we could employ them um right away in our in our schools while they are juniors or seniors. So in a nutshell, that summarizes uh the job descriptions that we are bringing forward for your consideration tonight.
All right, um James.
Mike, is it possible to get red lines? Because I had a hard time connecting the notes to actual document edits. I'm taking these documents that you provided as finals. Is there a way that I can see a red line?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Nancy.
When we had our um weekly work session prep session, um they talked about the, the new administration instructional part, could you go into that a little more?
Mike, I, do you want me to try?
Yes, please, that'd be great.
The older job description really focused on managerial uh over instructional leadership, and to make the shifts that we need to in this district, it's going to depend on our building principals, as well as the APs, uh really understanding instructional practices, so this job description relies on that.
Will there be a component in it that um if the, if numbers in the school are not satisfactory, will that be a consideration in the evaluation of principals?
I appreciate that question, that would be the difference between evaluation and supervision and then the job description, right? So the job description outlines what we expect in terms of the essential functions when they're being hired, um and then that evaluation process would address that, that's a great point.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, Andrew.
Thank you, with regards to the maintenance positions, um what, what procedures are in place if some, I would imagine that it's possible that over the years, perhaps someone has maybe been successful in a position where now there's a formal lifting requirement and there hasn't before, but things have just kind of worked themselves out potentially? Or um or a situation where there's a new a new skill coming into a building, um are I guess, are are jobs gonna be protected, would there be other opportunities if a change midstream in in job description? Um you know, affected one of our employees, especially one of our longer-term uh employees?
I appreciate that question, Andrew, yeah, the intention behind the lifting um requirements being part of it is to assist when um if somebody happens to have been out uh due to a workplace injury, to ensure that they're safe and ready to return, um as well as in the initial hiring process, to ensure that somebody understands the expectations of the job. There's not an intention here to go after current employees, to put them through the wringer in that regard, if that makes any sense, I appreciate that question.
Well, I, it's not, it's not that I would ever think that um, you know, you would have intention to do that, but sometimes there's unintended consequences of of things, so just making sure on that.
Yes, thank you.
And um also, Brian knows, and also, it looks like um Laura LW's hand is up on the Zoom as well.
Oh, um thank you, Andrew, go ahead, Laura.
Hi, Mike, thank you for sharing this update, I I just wanted to um check in about, you talked about the hiring supervisor, they're normally the ones to um do the job description update, is that correct, or to request a review? Or do they do it themselves, or requested, or how does that work?
Right, so um we have um a job description template, that is the the standard template that the board has had in place for a number of years, and then there were some instructions that um G Marsh had put forward as far as the order of operations to do that. HR works with them in the process, and then um you know, de- depending on the number of stakeholders that should be consulted. So for instance, in the principal one, uh the school leadership team, um they worked with me initially, and then they worked with current principals to get their input and feedback, uh to assure that that everybody was kind of on on the same page about it prior to bringing it forward to you tonight.
Thank you.
Brian.
Hi, Mike, um so it's kind of a statement and just a observation, or I'd like your opinion on it. Um previously, we've spoken about making sure that we can keep our employees here and providing any opportunities there are for trainings, and um especially if our employees are um wanting to work up and shift in job descriptions and and rates and positions in there. I'm hoping that that can continue to happen and that we look internally if we have these new job positions, and are we providing any training or opportunities for training if, say, we have a s- a staff member that is there, there's a promotion opportunity for them, they've been with the district, but I I guess I'm looking, I'm not a tradesperson, so I guess I'd be looking at like an HVAC position with different levels that we can partner with either groups to help them get that training or cover it internally, so um I don't know if we do that now, but I'd like us to consider it and keep working on it, so Mike, I don't know if there's a question there or a statement, so.
No, I appreciate that, it actually sparks something that I I I neglected to mention on the onset. In order to be competitive in the uh the industry when it comes to our trades and our our facilities, folks, um it does require, you know, a review of what are, wh- what's going on with regards to um out in private industry, and so I'll try to figure out how do we not lose people? Um but also, one of the things that we started exploring is we've reached out and working with um uh the the facilities uh maintenance trades administrators, we've connected with, again, the Department of Workforce Development to talk about um bringing on apprenticeships, not at the, not necessarily at the K-12 level, but more than adult apprenticeship, so the, you know, the plumbing apprenticeship, the electrician apprenticeship. And so that would be an opportunity for, again, you're talking about that career ladder and that development of the grow your own, so we're in the early stages of having that conversation and partnering with the local trades unions around that as well. So that's one step that we'll be looking at there.
Yes, go ahead.
I think this is a natural opportunity to continue our partnerships with NWTC and other organizations in the area, and um I'd love to sit down and chat with you on that sometime about how we can, as a board, we can support it and and what resource we have in the community to make sure our employees in facilities and the trades um that we can train them and that we can keep them.
Yeah, spot on, thank you, uh appreciate that, look forward to the conversation.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Um I believe that's it then, thank you, Mike. Oh, shoot. Um next, we're going to move on to under education, um Head Start grant extension requests, and we're gonna be joined by Rachel. Rachel, are you there?
I am, hello, for some reason, it won't let me start my video, so, oh, there we go.
There we go. Hi.
Hi, it's good to see all of you. Um our first request that we're bringing to you um for you to get, consider is back in twenty twenty-one, Sally Jansen, the current Director of Head Start, had started um a grant project with the HSLC site, and at the HSLC site, we're looking to add an addition. Um that project has not started yet, and this, these funds are set to expire March thirty-first of this year. So what we would like to do with the Office of Head Start is we would like to request uh continuation of that grant money, and that's what we'd like to request your approval for.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Rachel? Okay, Laura, are you good? Okay, all right, then I, we can move on to the second um Head Start continuation application selection criteria, go ahead, Rachel.
Annually, the um Head Start has to create our selection criteria. Our goal in Head Start is to find the most potentially vulner- vulnerable students in the Green Bay area public school boundaries. So we create selection criteria in order to establish um how we are going to find those students and choose which ones from our applications get enrolled. We are suggesting no changes from last year's selection criteria to this year's criteria, we are just looking to get them approved.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay.
Laura.
Oh, go ahead, James.
The selection criteria, is that a document that can be made available, or can you point? Document.
I, I don't know, did you hear that, Rachel?
Yes, we, we absolutely have the document, we can, we can get it to you at any time.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? I'm gonna sneeze here. Okay, um moving on, um Head Start Self-Assessment twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, go ahead, Rachel.
So lastly, at each year, our Head Start has to complete what is called a self-assessment. What that looks like is we invite all stakeholders to Head Start, and we have a meeting where we really focus on answering several questions to develop or to understand whether or not Head Start is meeting its priorities as a program. So we invite parents, we invite um our board liaisons, if they're available, and then we have all of our Head Start employees in this meeting, having rich discussions around how we are doing. And then what we do is we take all of that data that we collected in that meeting, and we create an improvement plan. So what we are really requesting is both that you um are approving the summary and as well as the improvement plan, and the pieces that we really picked out from there that were high-leverage pieces that we would like to focus on. Those focus around several different areas, but I'll kind of give you the thirty-thousand-foot view of them. Um the first one is we'd like to integrate our social emotional specialist in a different capacity, and we really had written to our grant in our last grant cycle that we would add an additional social emotional specialist so that we could have one at each building. Um the next piece is we want to create a method for tracking our student behaviors and how we can then support that data and to send it on to kindergarten and potentially 4K, so that we have something that is following those students. The next piece is um our bus routes, our bus routes currently are quite long because Head Start students, we offer all of our students the ability to be bussed, which is fantastic, but sometimes those routes can be long, so we really want to look at the efficiency of our bus routes and what we can do to help support those. Our next piece is the effectiveness of Child Plus, which is our data management system, so how can we best use it? It is a very robust system, and we're just learning all of the bits and pieces about it, and we want to really understand it and know how we can use it appropriately. Um the next piece is really critical for Head Start. We want to increase opportunities for parent leadership and their own advocacy. As you well know, Head Start is not just about student growth, it's also about family growth, and we really want to give our parents in the program the opportunity to take on those leadership roles and to advocate for themselves. And the next pieces really revolve around the new directors, so this is my first year's director and Patty Mavis, my co-director, this is her second year as co-director. So it's really about learning our positions and taking on some opportunities to really ensure that we are being as responsive to Head Start as we possibly can, and that came out as in the self-assessment that we want to focus on that. And then the last part was a repeat question from last year. Head Start is really focusing on safety of students, so something that we are cho- choosing to do is continue to look at our active supervision plan and how we can best keep students safe at all times.
Okay, thank you, anybody, anybody have any questions? James.
The same question as the last uh agenda item, um the memorandum references an attachment that's not available, which I take it to be the actual self-assessment, so if you want me to approve the assessment, I'd like to read it, I mean, for the board meeting, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Laura, do you have any questions about Head Start? Okay. All right.
No question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Laura. No, you're good?
No questions.
Okay, all right, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, next is um a referendum updates, which is always, always fun. Take it away, Josh.
Yep, I mean, we continue to make progress um at a number of sites at this point. If you drive around, you'll be able to see it, uh the masonry recently went up on the weight room at uh West High School, that's really starting to, you know, look like a real building. I did want to um call three things to your attention. At the next board meeting, I'll be asking you to take action on awarding a general contractor for the Preble projects. Um so that would be the auditorium renovation, the commons addition, the addition of classrooms, and a bathroom remodel there. I do not have that uh I do not have a a document for you tonight, but you will see that um the next time you're able to take action. West High School, we have, we will have a recommendation um for an award for the grandstand as well. Um that'll be G, JWI, um same people that that did Preble. So um we need to get that get that through so we can get that designed. And then finally, we've been been looking oh at um at potential renewable energy projects, and as you're probably aware, in in the November twenty-two referendum, there was a um an idea to put a solar array in the field between Lombardi and King. As we've been meeting with engineers and looking at a design, it's become clear that it would be much more efficient to do um rooftop-mounted pieces, so that is the way that um I'm planning on moving forward, I've spoken to the administrators of both buildings, um so they understand it because it is a change, but I I did want to make you aware of that, um in case you had any, any concerns before we went too far down that road. Our, our initial um assessment at King offsets offsets uh carbon due to electricity by ninety-five percent, so it's uh pretty impressive. Um we're not quite getting that same uh number at Lombardi, but um it's a, it's pretty cool.
Okay. Um so the roofs that those two buildings would um support tha- those kind of structures, okay?
Yeah, and we'll likely be stacking um federal tax rebates available through the Inflation Reduction Act um with with the um with the, with the bond um money to to do those projects.
Okay. Um go ahead, Brian.
And Josh, that was gonna be my question, because I know that there's the federal funding with that, is there a way that we would be able to using that reserves duplicate this in other buildings, or look at green energy with it using the same resource, or does it kind of go into um like which pot of mine does the refund or the rebate go into, does it go back into referendum, does it go into one of the other funds, what, how does that work out?
Well, I was going to say it can go wherever you want, but it can't go back into the fund, because there will be a, you you can't apply for the rebates until after the project's complete, so um I mean, we're talking and then you have to run based on the tax year as well, so it could be one to two years after the project completion before we see those rebates. Um I think if I had to make a recommendation to the board, um I'd put that money back into Fund Forty-Six, which is the fund established um to support the district's renewable energy goals.
Okay, anybody else wanna? Laura? Go ahead, Brian.
As we look at the engineering and the, you know, I would like us to um view the solar panels, the green energy at Lombardi as an opportunity to be replicated at some point, you know, if we if we see what's gone right and what can be improved on and different resources and stuff, the- If we see what's gone right and what can be improved on and different resources and stuff, the the fact that 30% of this is. Eligible for rebates is amazing, especially for schools. I've noticed some stuff that has outdoor learning. Opportunities and different different options covered parking and things like that. So. It's a really exciting area for us to grow and make some good improvements on.
This might be a good moment to mention too that our sustainability committee will be seated. They've been chosen, but. Do you happen to have the date of the first meeting?
Yes, that will be. I did have that.
So like early March? March 5?
Yes, March 5. We we were deciding as a group on a there were. There were several potential dates available. But to to Brian's point. As we've been working on King and Lombardi, we've been assessing other. Other schools as well. I've been on like. Roofs had 15 different schools and we're looking at other. Options. It's just we have the capital available for Lombardi and King right now, you know, so it's a little further along. We do also have some concrete plans at Elder Leopold. So those are a little bit further along, but we are continuing to assess.
This federal money that's available or coming online is going to be a real game changer for. I think for us as a district, other districts as well, but. It's going to make us able to do things that we. Didn't didn't really think we were going to be able to do maybe on such a accelerated basis. And I'm I'm really pretty excited about that. Just to finish my thought, though, about the sustainability committee. Brian had asked me, oh, God, a couple of months ago, if he could be the board liaison to that. So he'll be. Part of that committee and I think other board members, you know, I plan to come and visit once in a while, too. Do you know how often it's going to it's going to meet? Like, is it every other month or something like that?
That will be a topic on our very first agenda. The the board guidance around that did not specify a frequency.
Okay, okay. All right, go ahead, Brian.
I think the good, the other positive aspect of this with the federal funding is looking at partnerships with the city and. You know, I'm sure that might cause headaches in your job, but I'm an ideas guy sometimes, Josh, sorry. About, you know, utilizing whether our parking lots or. The city parks or whatever as well with it, but. I hope I didn't just throw monkey wrench into any plans, but.
Okay, James, go ahead.
This is not about a solar array. This is about the Preble update. So I don't think we've seen a rendering of the Preble updates to the auditorium or the commons. If you're contracting for a general contractor, architectural design's done, right? Are those renderings available? And if we're contracting now, you're estimating that the build will be during the summer?
Yeah, build will be going through the summer. We were. We were initially, we knew that the auditorium was going to take a little bit longer into November. Is what we initially thought as we had contractors come through the the prebid walkthroughs. There are some significant structural concerns that that need to be addressed that might extend that that timeline. It was not. It was not soundly built back in the day, and we have to hang more stuff from the the ceiling. So.
My question really is, is your confidence level about completing the work to commons? Because you can understand the auditorium not being available, but commons, it's a second. It's a second story, right? Now we're adding classrooms at a second level.
Yeah, so the the commons will be extended out toward Dan's Avenue there. On the lower level and then on the second level, there are six classrooms added along with the collaboration space. It's actually a really neat. I'll I'll get you those renderings. It's a pretty exciting project.
Yeah, I get excited. Preble is full at capacity and this is commons and I'm concerned mostly about the ability to execute the project and be ready for school to start.
Yeah, I think we're pretty confident on that.
Okay.
Yes, I've had some comments about East High and some driving in of some pylons or something that was very. Noisy. Was this the progress update on that? Because from what I've, the way it was portrayed to me, it's a severe impact on. Day to day life in the school.
Yeah, the the soils are really terrible out at East. So every addition off that way. Is built on pylons and this is no different. I think as a. Do we be? We met on last Thursday out at East. They had had. At that point, right around 40 pylons driven. So that's about a third of the pylons required. They were optimistic that they would be through pile driving by the end of next week.
I guess that that's good to know that they're talking about the the end of next week, but the I guess the way. It's been portrayed to me, the level of disruption is people. People having to leave due to. Headaches and feeling sick from this for the impact on classes is there. Is there anything else that can it be? You know, can it be shifted? Can it be moved to a? Second shift? Can it be moved to to weekends? Can we try to get? As much of at least some of it away from the the school day or? Things that are at least farther away from however it could be. Is there any mitigation that we could look at?
I think it'd be pretty tough. To do that if if we have. If we have particular employees that are. That are being affected. I know that Laurie, the principal there, has has already worked with people to move them to different. Parts of the school or we can try to get them away from. Where the noise is happening. Is. In talking with. In my my conversations with East staff, the the more bothersome. Noise is coming out of the tunnels where they're redoing the the stormwater, the stormwater system there. But I could. I could see how the pile driving just because of the the rhythmic nature of it could. Could potentially affect people. So I I would say if you have staff coming to you, I'd suggest that they talk to. The administrator there to see if we can make accommodations. And it shouldn't be too much longer.
So, okay, so that's something that's impacting generally a particular part of the the bill, like moving. A temporary move to another part of the building is a meaningful. Remediation then?
Yeah, yes, I think that it could. It could improve. The closer you get toward the office, the less the less you hear.
Laura, Lathan, Warren, did you have a question? No? Okay. All right, did anyone else have anything to say about referendum updates? Thanks, Josh. Okay, moving on to. Under agenda setting, a proposed. 2024, 2025. Board meeting schedule. You've all had a chance to look at this. Did anybody have anything, any concerns, any questions about this? Schedule for our board meetings next year? Okay. Then. If no one has anything, any questions, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, of course, we're going into closed session and. Hang on here, I just want to pull that up. I can't get it to come up. Let's we'll have Lynn do an expert at this. So go ahead, Lynn. Thank you.
I move that the board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically to wit, negotiation strategy for collective bargaining agreements between the district and collective bargaining units. And Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1A and F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories. Or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems. Or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public. Would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. Or involved in such problems or investigations to wit, for the purpose of holding expulsion hearings under Wisconsin Statute 120.13, Section 1C and E3. And Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, potential sale of district property.
Well done. Okay.
Did someone second it?
Second.
Go ahead.
Melissa, do we have flexibility in the order that we can do this or do we need to approve it with flexibility here? The topics? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Roll call? Kinsey? McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lightning and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned into closed session.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website. www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025. Or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.